Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, December 5, 2023. Will the clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavell, Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick, Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kill Smith, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Oh, you're supporting what?
Pledge allegiance unto the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please be seated. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
Shall move, Madam President.
Second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda's amended. Thank you. And our next order of business is proclamations. We have one from Councilman Wilson to be presented. Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Madam President.
Oh, is this? I'm sorry.
Do you want your people to come up? Do you want the people from Parking Authority here? Councilman, do you want the people from Parking Authority?
Yeah.
Will the folks from Parking Authority please come forward?
Hello, Dave. How are you? Good to see you.
Mr. Wilson.
All right. Morning, everyone. Good to see everyone this morning. And today, we come together to recognize a Pittsburgh Parking Authority employee, Richard Valerie, I'm sorry, Richard Valori. We, you know, oftentimes in Pittsburgh, we talk about people that are outside, people that are experiencing homelessness. And there's a lot of our workers, whether it's a DPW worker, or in this case, a Pittsburgh Parking Authority worker, that, you know, is working outside as well. And they come across, you know, oftentimes individuals that are unwell. In this case, someone that had overdosed. So in the light of everything that's going on here, and it's not nothing, it's not anything that any of us know that's new to what's happening outside, but this is a moment where we can take to not only recognize people that are suffering outside right now, and also that have, you know, an issue with substance use, dealing with substance use disorder, but, you know, basically all the workers that selflessly try to go out of their way to really help individuals and save a life. And so I wanted to first just, Dave, do you mind coming up and just introducing your staff here?
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. We have David Perry, HR, and Richard's coworkers, Aaron and Daryl. Bob Wilson runs, helps run the department, and Richard's father, I'm sorry, I don't hear your first name. Richard. So they're all here. And I also would just like to thank Richard, I mean, Richard and his peers and coworkers are out in the field every day maintaining our lots in the city. They do a great job for us. And on this specific day, Richard went above and beyond what he had to do and actually saved an individual's life. So we're very grateful for that. And we're grateful for all the work they do every day for us. And I forgot, I'm Dave Onorato, Executive Director of the Parking Authority.
All right. So if you got a parking ticket, you know who to be mad at.
Call your council.
All right. With that, I'd like to officially read the proclamation. Whereas, Richard Valori Jr. grew up on the north side of Pittsburgh and witnessed the detrimental impact that drugs can have on a community. Whereas, Mr. Valori works at the Pittsburgh Parking Authority and continues to serve as an active member of his community. Whereas, on October 30, 2023, while Mr. Valori was patrolling the Monongahela Wharf as part of his duties, he encountered a woman suffering from an apparent overdose. Whereas, thinking quickly and calmly, Mr. Valori immediately retrieved Narcan, an over-the-counter nasal spray that can treat opioid overdoses. And whereas, Mr. Valori then promptly administered Narcan and saved this woman's life. Whereas, Mr. Valori rightly believes that it is important for everyone to have access and learn how to administer Narcan in such life or death situations. Now therefore be it resolved that the City, that the Pittsburgh City Council does hereby commend Richard Valori Jr. for his swift thinking and heroic action on October 30, 2023, that saved this woman's life.
Do I have a motion to approve this? Apologies.
And be it, be it a further resolve that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby declares Tuesday, December 5, 2023, to be Richard Valori Day, Junior Day, here in the City of Pittsburgh.
Can I have a motion to approve in a second? All in favor? Proclamation is approved. Thank you, Councilman.
So, Richard, if you could come up and say a few words, that'd be great. I just want to let everyone know, though, that, you know, I think, I'm not sure if anyone's here has come across someone who's having an overdose, but I'm sure it was pretty dramatic. But, you know, people are reversing overdoses every day in the City of Pittsburgh multiple times. And, you know, in fact, in the, in the restrooms downtown, I recently learned that the workers there, who work at the restrooms, the Pittsburgh potties that are mobile, there's 12 overdoses that happen every week. So just wanted to recognize that. And so, Richard, if you could say a few words?
Hello, everyone. I really didn't expect to speak. Today kind of means a little bit a lot to me. It's my niece's birthday. Long story short, she died of accidental overdose. So today being, I guess, my day, I picked it for the 5th. Just means a lot. And then when I say, you know, we're all human, we all make mistakes, I think, you know, we all should learn about, you know, opiate use disorder, and I think it'd be a great thing. Other than that, like I said, I really believe we're all human and we all make mistakes. And it's best that if you can help somebody, you might as well. No matter what their choices are, what their decisions are, we're all human. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
I'd like for all members to come up. Before I do that, I just want to say that Richard also is the one that's making sure all the lots are clean and looking nice. And he goes above and beyond. So I think he does a great job. So, Richard, thank you for everything you do for the, for the City of Pittsburgh and what you did that day. That's my father. I don't think we won in the clubs. All right. If we can have all members come up?
Give everybody a chance to sit down. You're not presenting one? It doesn't say. Yeah, it just says red. Thank you. Okay, can we have Jeff Carter, please, come forward? And I just want to say today just seems to be the day we're going to acknowledge a lot of the great things Pittsburgh City employees are doing in the City and beyond. We have three employees being recognized today. And I'm taking the crossing guard first and get out there and cross kids' streets.
Jeff Carter.
Come up. Up here. Donna McManus and I go way back. When I found out that she was in charge of the crossing guards, I had to read it three times to make sure it was my Donna McManus. Okay. We're gonna start with this one. You can all come up here. Okay. Donna, you know you're gonna have to say a few words to be ready.
Thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome. Whereas, well, let me first tell you how I met Jeff Carter. I saw a video on Facebook and some guys yelling about the condition of a park in Mount Washington. So I drive up there and I said, "Excuse me," I said, "What do you, what do you complain about this park for?" And he said, "Look at the condition of it. There's wood here, there's this there, that." I said, "It's there because we're actually renovating the park." So, so from that day forward, we became friends. I said, "Let's, let's build a relationship in talking about what needs to happen and how we can work together to make things happen." And working together, we did a lot so far in Mount Washington. But I just want to say he himself has done extraordinary work on his own. Whereas, Jeff Carter grew up in Mount Washington and has dedicated countless volunteer hours to improve the safety and quality of life for its residents. And whereas, Jeff created several groups where residents can share memories, preserve the historic significance of the Mount Washington community, and work through issues pertaining to the community. And whereas, some of his initiatives included keeping the city steps clean and safe and maintaining the Charles A. Lewis Parklet in partnership with several organizations by cutting the grass and keeping it free of litter. As a City of Pittsburgh school crossing guard, Jeff received recognition for cleaning up trash and overgrown bushes on the corners where he crosses children and pedestrians. And whereas, working with the volunteers and from organizations, the organizations send relief, Jeff established the Mount Washington Mondays to help with beautification projects within the community. And whereas, in addition, Jeff has collected items for the homeless, repaired over 300 bikes, 300 bikes distributed to neighborhood youth, and he has collected sparring gloves for the youth attending the Mount Washington Boxing Club. And whereas, now therefore be it, I'm sorry, and now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Jeff Carter in the selfless work he does for the neighborhoods of Mount Washington and Duquesne Heights. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, December 5, 2023, to be Jeff Carter Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Can I have a motion to approve in a second?
Shall move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation is approved. I just want to tell people, when you get a proclamation, people think, "Oh, they give so many out." They become part of Pittsburgh's history. Not only do we save them in our vault, but they're now documented with our archivist. And they make, so if somebody Googles your name down the road, your name will come up as someone who received a proclamation. It's part of Pittsburgh's history. So they're really significant. Go ahead. Say a few words.
Sure. Thank you. I'd just like to say thank you to the City of Pittsburgh, to the Mayor's Office, Teresa Kill, the City Council, Donna and the, and the crossing guard for giving me an opportunity to find my career, find my best job I've ever had in my life. And that's, you know, very fulfilling, making sure the kids get on and off the school buses and everything's safe. And when we first started this, I had no idea we'd get this far. And we got, we got thousands of volunteers and so many people that helped out and brought it forth for us. And I'm really grateful. I'm humbled. And I really enjoy doing this work. So we like to keep doing this and we're gonna keep going. And thank you, everybody, for coming today. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And we'll have a top crossing guard say a few words here.
Thanks, Teresa. Good morning, everyone. I had the pleasure of hiring Jeff Carter last year as a school crossing guard. And his commitment to the children that he serves and the extra above, going above and beyond, is just phenomenal. He did a coat drive. The school crossing guards, especially this time of year, are on the front lines of things that we see that break our hearts. We have kids that come to our corners when it's 20 degrees in just a long-sleeved shirt, no hat, no gloves. Some have socks on their feet, some don't. Jeff took it upon himself to start a coat drive for the children that come to his corner so that they will be warm throughout the winter. That's the kind of crossing guard that Jeff is for us. He's always on time. He's always on the corner. And he is always, always looking out for kids. Just, I'm gonna plug you guys. If anybody's looking for a job, we're still hiring crossing guards. We are still short-staffed. We have requests coming in all the time for dangerous intersections. And we can't fill those intersections unless we have bodies out in the field. So if you know any of your constituents, anybody in the audience who might know somebody, a retired person, somebody who's kind of looking for a job, it's the best job you'll ever have. And it is the most fulfilling. So thank you.
Thank you both. Anybody else want to say anything? Okay, we'll take a photo. Do you want to say anything?
Let me, let me, sorry.
Let's introduce the people.
I will, okay. So the people that came here, my assistant, Colleen Buckley, is the Assistant Crossing Guard Supervisor. Millie Tedesco, Millie Tedesco is the crossing guard that trained me. But she was also the one that trained Jeff right before she retired. So when we found out this was happening, I gave Millie a call. I said, "You gotta come down here. Jeff's getting an award. And it would mean a whole lot to him to have the person who, who really, truly made an impact on his training." And as it turned out with the bidding process, Jeff bid on Millie's corner and was awarded Millie's corner. So it's kind of like a, like a next generation of folks up there at Broadway and Shira. So, and Jeff's daughter and her friend. Right? Sean. Sean helps. You're, you're Jeff's brother, Sean? Oh, my gosh, I did not know that. I'm sorry, Sean. Okay, we good? Okay, thanks. All right.
I do want to say that Jeff's brother helps him tremendously. Councilman Coghill, you want to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. First of all, congratulations, Jeff. Really, really well deserved. I got to know Jeff and Sean about a year ago or so. And I know how active they are in Mount Washington. But I gotta tell you, I'm really happy he's on that corner where Millie was for so many years. It's a very busy corner in Beachview. And not only is he there to make sure everybody's safe, but he actually looks after, as did Millie, the health and well-being of the students. And, you know, they're, they're very, very involved and they keep a close eye on everybody there. Even simple things like, remember the war monument was missing a little plaque? And, you know, that's important, especially to our veterans. Jeff called me and, you know, I came up there with a cock and gun and we took care of it. But, but so thank you for what you do. Donna, great hire in Jeff. You know, I want to keep him on Shira for as long as we can, all right?
As long as he wants to stay there.
Yeah, thanks. So congratulations, Jeff. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you want to come up for the photo?
Messiah?
Do you want to come up for the photo? Anybody want to come up? Want to join us?
Sure.
Yeah, come on. And if anyone wants to donate to Jeff, you can contact our office and we'll put you in touch with them, especially coats. I apologize. I didn't see Director, thank you, Councilman Kraus, Director Schmidt for Public Safety. Do you want to come up and say a few words? Say, say a few words. Jeff, you have Director Schmidt here. Came out for you, too.
Yeah, I just want to thank Jeff for all the great work and all the crossing guards. And as Donna said, if anybody's looking for a nice, fun career, working for a great supervisor, please sign up to be a crossing guard in the city. We definitely need them. And we need more folks like Jeff. Thank you very much for everything you do as a crossing guard and everything you do for your community. It's a commitment to serve, which is, I think, what everybody in this city that works for the city does. But you go above and beyond. And we thank you for that.
Okay, we have one more employee.
Richard Snipe.
Mr. Snipe, please come forward. And I just want to say both Richard and Jeff Carter live in District 2. Richard, bring everybody with you. Come on, you've got a crowd here. They gotta get up here. I just want to say this proclamation is long overdue. Mr. Snipe has worked many, many, many years for the City of Pittsburgh in terms of housing. And has an amazing team. Do you want to come up here? Come up here with your family? You have a long proclamation. It's a lot of years. Come up, everybody, come up. Anybody who wants to come up, come up. That's that. And I do want to say the City of Pittsburgh has amazing employees. I would like to give one big proclamation to all the amazing employees that we have. But every once in a while, we have to acknowledge and recognize some of the outstanding work people do and want to, want to do that. But I do want to say that we have the most amazing employees in the City of Pittsburgh. And we thank them every day for the work that they do on behalf of the city and the times they go beyond to make sure that they're helping us be the amazing city that we are. We sometimes forget how amazing we are. Okay. Whereas, Richard Snipe is the Executive Director of the Pittsburgh Housing Development Corporation, PHDC, and the Director of For Sale Housing, a URA Housing Development and Rehabilitation Program with a focus on affordable housing. And whereas, Richard joined the Urban Redevelopment Authority, the URA, in January 1991 as a development officer and has held several positions, including Coordinator of Faith-Based Initiatives and Manager of Community Lending, before becoming an Executive Director. And whereas, he has worked with both for-profit developers and nonprofit community development corporations in making quality for-sale and rental housing available throughout the city. And in District 2 alone, Mr. Snipe has worked on 10 homes in Sheridan, two houses in Mount Washington, and two houses in the Crafton Heights area. And whereas, Mr. Snipe is a graduate of the American Institute of Banking and the National Development Council, where he has earned his certification in housing development finance, as a housing development finance professional. He has also completed the PA Real Estate Broker's Requirements at Robert Morris University, and he has been a licensed real estate professional since 1983. And whereas, in 2018, Bloomfield Garfield Corporation presented him with a Public Service Honoree Award for helping hundreds of families become new homeowners. Since 2018, Richard has served on the City of Pittsburgh's Historic Review Commission and has, and serves as the Vice Chairman of the Allegheny County Board of Property Assessment and Appeals and Review. And whereas, Mr. Snipe thrives off of helping others improve their station in life, which comes from his volunteer, volunteer service as a minister for over 40 years. I didn't know that. For over 40 years. Mr. Snipe is a native Pittsburgher and is currently, currently resides in Westwood with his wife, Betty, of 43 years. Wow, that's a long time. Now, they have two adult children, daughters, three grandchildren, and one granddog. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Richard Snipe for his service to the City of Pittsburgh. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, December 5, 2023, to be Richard Snipe Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Can I have a motion to approve in a second?
Shall move.
Second. All in favor? Proclamation is approved. I'm gonna turn it over to you to say a few words. And I'm sure other people might want to have to say a few things, too. So here's your proclamation. Thank you for all your work.
This really comes as a surprise, and words can't describe how thankful I am for it. But the work that I do, none of it's possible without the help that I receive from this fantastic crew of people at the URA. So I want to acknowledge all 100-plus men and women at the URA. Together, we make these things possible so housing can be available for families throughout the City of Pittsburgh. So I ask you and encourage you, continue to support our work. Without the support of many, homes would not be available. So again, as we think about it, we need your support. So anyone watching this or hearing this, including our foundation partners, continue to support this work. Pittsburgh needs it. We've earned it. Thank you, folks.
Can everybody go to the mic down here and introduce yourselves and say who you are, so we know? Do you want to introduce yourselves at this mic, please? Starting with the woman with you. Thank you. I didn't want them to have to come up the steps. Yeah, thank you.
Hi, good morning. I am the cousin of Richard Snipe, and I'm so proud of him. And I just esteem him so highly because he's done so well. Thank you.
Do you want to just introduce yourselves to the public and if there's something you want to say?
Hello, I'm Canaan Bay. I'm the Construction Manager at the PHDC at the URA. Since I've met Rich Snipe, when I met him, I was a Building Inspector for the city. And now I'm managing construction for the PHDC. And since the day I met him, my life has been, has been changed. You know, he's really helped me out and I'm grateful for him. Thanks.
Nice. Introduce yourself. Everyone, go ahead. Everyone's gonna have to do it, so you might as well.
My name's Gloria Taylor. And I've been working with Rich ever since I started at the URA. It's over 20 years. And he's just wonderful. I love him to pieces. And I know everybody does.
Hi, I'm his cousin, Carmen Harper. And Rich has always been that type of person, ever since he was younger. He's such a great person, and we love him so much. Thank you.
Okay. Justin.
Hello, my name is Nancy Reese. I'm Project Development Manager, the URA, with Richard. I've worked with Richard outside for, I think, over eight, nine years now. And I want to thank him for his leadership, his knowledge, and his continuing inspiration to provide affordable homeownership to the residents of Pittsburgh.
Come on.
Hello, hi, I'm Shayla Tompkins. I'm the Program Outreach Specialist here at the PHDC in the URA. Under Richard's leadership, I have grown to learn so many different things. He is a remarkable leader. And I am so proud to have him as our leader and boss.
I am Justin Veltan. I'm the Manager of Housing Development for the Pittsburgh Housing Development Corporation. I've been with the URA for about five years now and served under Rich the entire time. I'm proud to say that he's the most thoughtful and caring leader that I've ever served under. And he really helps build up all the team members and provide them with the opportunities they need to succeed. And he's been a great mentor to me and many others. So I appreciate him and I'm very thankful for, for his leadership.
Hi, I'm David Howell. I'm the Financial Operations Manager at PHDC. I've been working with Rich for twenty-two, twenty years now. We've, you know, Rich and I, I am very happy to work with Rich. He's been a great supporter of everything that PHDC does in advancing affordable housing in the city of Pittsburgh. This kind of work really can't be done without somebody like Rich who can promote this kind of work, which is desperately needed in the city of Pittsburgh. And all of us in the city are better for having him at the PHDC and working on problems like this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Did I miss? Did you come up? Come on, get up. Nice try. Nice try.
I got caught. My name is Pastor Craig Whitehead, Pastor of New Life Church of God in Greenfield. I need to speak with you. Councilperson Strasburger. I'm proud of Rich. He's my cousin-in-law, but he's been a quiet inspiration. I don't think he knows how much he means to me, just in terms of leadership and what it takes to lead a group of people. He's a wonderful person, and it's been my pleasure and a blessing to have married into his family. And he deserves every accolade that he receives. It's all been well-deserved. So proud of you, Rich. Proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you. And so I just want to say, your wife is not here, right? She's not here?
This is her.
Oh, you're here?
No, 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 this is my, this is my wife.
Wait a minute. Okay, so you share a wife now and what else? Okay. So I just want to say, I would like to say to her, thank you for putting up with us for so many years too, because there's many nights that you're at meetings and in community groups, and I know Justin, actually, under your leadership, has gone into homes and did, took the applications for housing, so that people can, he can reach the people in the community. So thank you for going above and beyond. All the members want to join us for a photo? Okay, and now we have two proclamations to be read into the record.
Hey, thanks for letting me know about it. Congratulations.
Yeah, do you mind? Yeah, thank you.
Councilman Kraus presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does declare Thursday, November 30th, 2023, to be Cribs for Kids Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Let's read them both, please.
Oh, motion to approve.
Can we read? Motion to approve, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved. The next one, please.
Councilperson Strasburger presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare December 11th, 2023, to be Amnesty International US Local Group 39 Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved. Thank you. And our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters that concern official action or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity and threats will not be permitted. When you are called to speak, please state your name and neighborhood. For the record, you will have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bales Hoover, Melbourne, Australia. The world's sports capital, so they say. Dunya, which is Housa for Global Intelligence Society, candidate for President 2024, globalintelligencessociety.org. I taught the Theory of Sport at the University of Pittsburgh. I invented the course. I have created the basketball team, Globallers, and I invite any of you to join. A concern of Pittsburgh City Council is recognition of local city halls of fame. The City of Pittsburgh High School Math and Science Hall of Fame, it does not exist. The City of Pittsburgh High School City League Athletic Hall of Fame, yes. I commend Mr. Bill Neal for establishing an entity recognizing high-level high-school canistisia. However, more than ninety percent of the individuals in the City League Hall are of Ebony African descent. I think this is anti-equity and anti-diversity, which are Ghanai positions and council positions. Less than eight percent Ivory European descent, less than two Copper Indigenous, Bronze Latin, Gold Asian descent. Mr. Neal and his public comment supporters, over ninety percent males of Black African descent, twenty-eight November 2023, at council, sent two messages reinforcing what I think are racist stereotypes widespread in US-American culture in their public comments. One message was that Black Americans of African descent are, in general, better at bodywork, sports, and sex than brain work, reinforcing the image of Black African-American slave, laboring manually and contributing, performing in baby-making. Consider the history of the LA Lakers. The other message is that generally for Black American kids, high school is the lifetime achievement high point. But for Asian-American kids and their parents, this is unimaginable. African-American families, I think wrongly stress sports and science over math, and the reverse is the case for Asian-American families who, I think rightly stress science and math over sports. They invite their kids to be fierce about, about math and science. African-American parents more often see Cs and Bs as satisfactory, and Asian-American parents do not, only As. Asian families make approximately eighty-five thousand dollars a year, and African-American families fifty-five thousand dollars a year.
I shut my mic off. Our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullin. Naomi Mullin.
Here, I honor my husband, who was a true public servant of the city of Pittsburgh from the 1970s until 2021. Shady trees, not shady deals, and Bon Air. Here is the situation. An excellent school was closed. The building has become a threat and detrimental harm. It should be condemned and sold to the city for a dollar. It must be torn down. Parks and trees Pittsburgh funds used to make it a green state. The residents of Bon Air care for it as volunteers. Why are we paying taxes for continued detriment? Why should we pay taxes for a detriment? Declaration of Rights. What are the rights set forth in the Declaration of Rights of the Pennsylvania Constitution? The Declaration of Rights of the Pennsylvania Constitution predates and was a model for the Bill of Rights of the United States Constitution. It is primarily a list of domes where the General Assembly in that it prohibits the enactment of laws that would infringe on certain rights. Those rights and prohibitions are set forth in the twenty-eight sections of the Declaration. Section two, political power. All power is inherent in the people, and all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness. For the advancement of these ends, they have at all times an inalienable and indefeasible right to alter, reform, and abolish their government in such manner as they think proper. We have tried for over two years now to have Bon Air school building torn down and turned into a green state. But self-proclaimed friends of the mayor and city employees are encouraging developers to buy the school. The school board would rather spend multiple times the price of the building to keep it instead of cut their losses. We have been harmed by the school closure and the detrimental building. Is the resistance to giving the building to the city for a dollar related to a desired kickback? The mass of holding onto the building makes zero sense. Then, we assume that lack of logic in math schools is due to public education, or is there a lining of pockets involved? Where is the fiscal guidance? Retired Deputy Chief Mike Mullin touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication is his sworn duty to provide for the safety of citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. We love sharing his knowledge of firefighting and all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Michael J. Mullin lived his full life as his obituaries are accurately described.
Our next, our last registered speaker is Devin J. McLean.
Devin McLean from the Hill District. I wanted to say about that, the money you're allocating to pay all the police, the police budget, keep the money there, because you're going to have to fire some of them, as indicated by the dude who was high up and shot a bullet through the bottom of his police car. A number of months ago, I proposed to this council that maybe you should register random drug tests for the Pittsburgh Police Department, since they want to be like soldiers and sailors so much, you know? And then every year, you perform a decimation, which means the worst ten percent immediately get fired. Forget about what the union says. I'm forget, I'm so tired of the FOP number one bullying you people around, and then it affects people like me. You want to, okay, take the money to study Black women, but here's what you ask them. How many times have you told a Black man you was going to lie to the police about him? How many times you kick a Black man out, knowing he ain't going to have another paycheck for the next twelve days? How many times you kick a Black man out, knowing you're just kicking him out to keep his stuff, because the police aren't going to believe him when they show up? How you go from forty-two thousand one hundred ninety dollars to one point six million dollars for the maintenance of documents? That's 2023, twenty-two eighty-four in the syllabus here. Seems like a big jump. You may want to take another look at that. Why don't you study how many Black women got cocaine in their system and ain't doing they son's laundry and ain't taking they kids to the barber shop at least every two weeks, but you want to say how good they're doing and what victims they are? A lot of these single mothers, single Black mothers ain't victims. They know what they doing. They've been knowing what they doing at least since 1989, okay? When a Black boy or a Black child tells you that their mother is strung out, she's smoking crack, the mother didn't get the crack from the child. It ain't the child's fault. Get some of these mothers off the crack, and then you can solve the problem with the youth. It ain't a hoop court.
That exhauster is the registered speakers. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address City Council?
Good morning, everybody. My name is Sam Schmidt. I'm a resident of Bellevue. I'm a community organizer and activist surrounding homeless issues. I'm also a formerly unhoused person. I'm also a concerned resident of this vibrant city, and I'm here today to address a matter of utmost importance, the housing crisis that continues to affect Pittsburgh residents, particularly those who are currently experiencing homelessness. Since I last spoke here, the city has successfully opened an emergency shelter space totaling one hundred and thirty new cots, giving us hope that we can prevent death and harm to one hundred and thirty of our neighbors on the next below-freezing night. I am personally grateful that the city has finally been able to open their emergency shelter space just over two weeks away from the longest night of the year. But housing our fellow Pittsburgh residents should not be a mere act of finding shelter. It must be an earnest commitment to providing long-term affordable housing for all. I had the privilege of speaking with the incoming county executive yesterday, who has expressed a commitment to implementing a housing-first approach to meet our growing need for affordable housing and shelters for the unhoused. This is a step in the right direction, and I urge City Council to support and collaborate with the mayor's office, DHS, and county government in ensuring success of this initiative. It is crucial that our plans are not only well-intentioned, but also well-thought-out. The recent encampment sweep at First Avenue Camp is a glaring example of poor planning, followed by poor communication, followed by poor execution. This not only created unnecessary harm and trauma to the residents of the camp, but also highlighted the need for a more thoughtful and compassionate approach to addressing the growing challenge of homelessness in our city. We cannot get an accurate assessment of need without making contact with each of the camps and individuals who are living outside. It is my estimation that the number of folks living outside or without shelter is much higher than one hundred and thirty individuals. The city's outreach team Roots does a good job at connecting folks, connecting with folks living outside, but they are understaffed, and staffing will be the next challenge for the new emergency shelter spaces as well. I propose that the City Council takes a proactive stance in pressuring the mayor's office and DHS to think through the logistics of their plans. Let's prioritize the voices of those who are currently unhoused, incorporating their feedback into the decision-making process. They are the ones directly affected by these policies, and their insights can guide us toward more effective and humane solutions. Moreover, I implore each member of council to use your influence to stop the mayor's office from implementing any more encampment sweeps. Instead, let's focus on collaborative efforts that truly address the underlying issues of homelessness and pave the way for sustainable, long-term solutions. Encampment sweeps are traumatic, overwhelming experiences for the people living in them, and it's our job as the leaders in this city to minimize that trauma as much as humanly possible and to show some grace and compassion for those who are already struggling beyond what some of you can even imagine. We do that through better planning, better execution, and better communication. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers wishing to address City Council?
Hello again. My name is Rachel Nains. I'm the Executive Director at the Thomas Merton Center. Our office is located in Wilkinsburg, but I'm a resident of the Hill District. I'm here going to talk about issues our unhoused neighbors are dealing with, because I know it may be hard for all of you to keep your finger on the pulse of all the goings-on. I also want to echo and thank Sam for her comments. Today in particular, I wanted to talk about the quote "blue" action plan that the mayor's administration and the county finally announced days after a cold snap, that should have triggered such a plan by the plan's own criteria. And that's the primary issue, right? That a plan seemingly That a plan seemingly wasn't in place until more public pressure was applied by the homeless advisory, advisory board as well as some of our neighbors. The city and county should have been working on these plans with the advisory board and the community, had these plans in place, announced to the public and ready to enact weeks ago. It takes time for information about these sort of things to trickle down to the people impacted and a lot of the folks, you know, I've been talking to have expressed confusion and fear to me directly. Another issue I wanted to bring up around this action plan, which I think speaks again to the lack of communication across agencies and offices, as well as a lack of community input and guidance, is, you know, that Second Avenue Commons where, according to that Code Blue Action Plan, folks are supposed to present when temperatures drop and severe weather hits, has no loitering and no trespassing signs up all over the place. And I just want you to think for a second, you know, if it's cold and snowing and I go to a place I've been told I can find help at and I see these signs, am I going to risk interaction with the police like the sign warns? You know, what happens when I make my way all the way over there and then I'm turned away because the Code, Code Blue plan hasn't been triggered because it's not twenty-six degrees, but it is thirty-two in freezing rain and I can't keep dry and warm? These communication issues and the lack of transparency and what I can only best describe as, you know, an aversion to community input on the part of the administration and some of these agency, agencies, impact the people in the streets the most. And we have hundreds of people out there and more every day losing housing and shelter. And, you know, I wanna thank you for your work so far, you know, and working swiftly in the capacity that you all have on these issues. And I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you all on these issues. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers wishing to address City Council?
Hello, everyone. My name is Phoebe Cook. I'm a resident of Squirrel Hill. This is my first meeting. I've taken time out of my workday to come here today to also call for urgent action to protect our most vulnerable neighbors. I specifically want to, I mean, I echo what other speakers have said. I appreciate the progress towards a severe weather action plan, but specifically I wanna say that the current threshold set of temperatures hitting twenty-six degrees overnight is dangerously low. Just to establish that I know what I'm talking about here, my doctorate work in biology required me to work in many extreme weather conditions. I've completed hundreds of hours of training in wilderness survival and emergency medicine and I used that as part of more than three years of work volunteering with search and rescue teams. I've been called out to dozens of missing persons cases and I can tell you that in almost any weather conditions, the thing that we are racing against on a search is hypothermia because you can get hypothermia in conditions far warmer than twenty-six degrees. I have had to carry the body of a woman who died of hypothermia home to her family when it was warmer than twenty-six degrees. Hypothermia is not just a matter of what the thermometer says. If you are lying on the ground, especially in wet conditions, you can freeze to death in forty or fifty degree weather, especially if you are elderly, chronically ill, have alcohol or drugs in your system affecting your body's internal thermoregulatory abilities. You won't know that it's happening. You won't be able to seek help. A twenty-six degree threshold for emergency services will very likely kill people. To the, to the extent that it doesn't, those who survive will have to survive by staying in very dangerous conditions, in abusive households or other things like that. We have the ability to provide options for shelter, heated tents and other things, and if we can, we have a responsibility to do so. So I'm asking you to please use your positions to expand when these emergency services are available in addition to working on badly needed longer-term solutions. Please help ensure that everyone makes it through the winter safely. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council?
Good morning. Yes, I'm Jacob Poole, formerly Joltjakob, Joltlevntjakob from Central and Eastern Europe. I'm here because most people take it for granted that, you know, they're, have moms and dads and they do normal family movement and immigration and things like that and no one talks about my immigration as a public knowledge, which is, I was in a facility where hundreds of children being prepared to be shipped to America in the nineties after Czechoslovakia broke up and before Yugoslavia broke up. And in the middle, opportunistic people were gathering children up and to bring to America using the Heinz Foundation and the Lignier-Bethlen Community Charity Organizations, which were connected to Hungarian, Slovak, and Romanian organizations, used to funnel children for money. So actually, I met a lady yesterday at a function and she was from Slovakia and she said she was a war bride, which meant that in the forties, she was rounded up with a bunch of women, put on a boat, and brought to America for forced marriage. But this is not common stuff. I'm in the Pittsburgh area and I haven't seen the children I was in a facility with in Eastern Europe since nineteen ninety-three. Some of them died in transport or transit or child trafficking, during the child trafficking process. So I'm here in Pittsburgh alone, isolated, kept isolated, being passed around with my Joltlevntjakob Hungarian name from University of Pittsburgh, to Lignier Valley High School, to Greensburg, to PNC Bank, to Giant Eagle, public-facing positions, where I'm hurt, kept alone, isolated, with medical conditions. And people from Hungary, Slovakia, Czech Republic, Germany, European Union are brought in front of me so they can see me hurt, alone, isolated, after brought here as a tactic to hurt them, to harm them, to demoralize them, to cause them to be in terror. Imagine if you went to China and a bunch of people surround you and says, hey, come, we have an American who works for us, and they'll take you to a bank, a PNC, and you was this American who was bad, here alone, isolated, crying out to you for help, saying, I was child trafficked here twenty years ago, I'm badly hurt and alone, isolated, help. So that's what I experienced in the last fifteen years in Pittsburgh. University of Pittsburgh campus, German students, French students, Ukrainian students, Hungarian students were paraded in front of me while I was telling them I was child trafficked here and child abducted by force. And I was with hundreds of children in facilities in Eastern Europe where people were making us records to bring here for extortion, ransom, exploitation, and I'm here, alone, isolated in Pittsburgh. And I know my fate, I'm gonna die a miserable death alone on the street because people that brought me here, they dumped me and I have no family, no friends, nothing, but by myself alone with strange medical issues I can't get medical help for. Thank you.
Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers and we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Burgess, Chair of Human Resources, Councilman Coghill for Councilman Burgess. No papers?
Thank you, Madam President.
No papers?
No new papers.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number Twenty-two forty, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Blue Pearl in an Amount Not to Exceed Twelve Thousand Eighty-five Dollars and Twenty-Six Cent for Payment of Emergency Veterinary Services. And Bill Twenty-two forty-three, Resolution Amending Resolution Number Four Fifty-Three of Two Thousand and Twenty-Two, Providing for an amended lease for the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Police Headquarters located at twelve oh three Western Avenue, extending the term six more years and providing for the payment thereof.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number Twenty-two forty-four, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to enter into a cooperation agreement or agreements with the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh for services relating to the management of the URA's public parcel inventory and providing for the payment of the cost thereof at an amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Bill Twenty-two forty-five, Resolution Amending Resolution Number One Sixteen of Two Thousand and Twenty-Two, which authorized the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional service agreement and/or contracts with Buchanan, Ingersoll, and Rooney P.C. for professional consulting services for federal government affairs and legislative services by authorizing one hundred and two thousand dollar payment through the end of the currently executed contract term. Bill Twenty-two forty-six, Resolution Amending Resolution Number One Seventeen of Two Thousand and Twenty-Two, which authorized the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional service agreements or contract with the Meladian Wooton, Inc. for professional consulting services for state government affairs and legislative services by authorizing one hundred fifteen thousand five hundred dollar payment through the end of the currently executed contract term. Bill Twenty-two forty-seven, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for Costs Associated with the Dragon Way Project where the PWSA is overseeing the design and construction of the storm water management components as well as the roadway, roadway replacement and rehabilitation and has or will retain the services of a design consultant, construction management, inspection consultant, and construction contractor for the project. The city will reimburse the PWSA for the work at a cost to the city not to exceed eight hundred twenty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars and ninety-four cent. And Bill Twenty-two forty-eight, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in into the publicly owned properties in the fifteenth ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, its block fifty-six F, lots one seventy-four and one seventy-six, in Council District Number Five, and no cost to the city.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Madam President.
You have a lot.
Thank you, Madam Clark.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number Twenty-two forty-nine, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Department of Community and Economic Development's Multimodal Transportation Fund for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to support the Davis Avenue Pedestrian Bridge. Bill Twenty-two fifty, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with STANTEC for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Engineering Phase for the Calera Street, Corley Street, and Maple Avenue Bridge Projects, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed one million three hundred twenty thousand dollars, reimbursable at one hundred percent. Bill Twenty-two fifty-one, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Johnson, Merriman, and Thompson for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Engineering Phase for the West Carson Street Bridge, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed five hundred eighty-seven thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty cent, reimbursable at ninety-five percent. Bill Twenty-two eighty-nine, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title Six Conduct by Amending Chapter Six Thirty-five Point Oh Three, Riding or Driving Prohibited Exception. Bill Twenty-two ninety, Ordinance Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title Six Conduct by Adding a New Chapter Six Forty Humane Animal Protection Act. And Bill Twenty-two ninety-one, Ordinance Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title Six Conduct by Adding a New Section to Chapter Six Forty Humane Animal Protection Act to Include Section Six Forty Point One Zero Force-Fed Products Prohibited.
These are mine, by the way, these three animal bills.
Thank you. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law, Councilwoman Strasburger for Councilman Lavelle, please. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Twenty-two fifty-two, Resolution Amending Resolution Eight Thirty of Two Thousand and Twenty-One, Authorizing an Agreement or Agreements with Tidings and Rosenberg LLP for Services Related to Disparity Studies for Disadvantaged Business Enterprises by Increasing the Approved Amount by One Hundred and Twenty Thousand Dollars for an amended total cost not to exceed one hundred forty-six thousand two hundred dollars over one year. Bill Twenty-two fifty-three, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the Claude Worthington Benedictum Foundation for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grant Funds in the Amount of One Hundred Thirteen Thousand Four Hundred Dollars to Support the Creation of a Wellness Index for Black Women with Program Partner Carlo University. Bill Twenty-two fifty-four, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Seven Twenty-Three of Two Thousand and Twenty-Two, Effective December Twenty-seventh, Two Thousand and Twenty-Two, Entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty-Three Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Twenty-Three Community Development Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty-Three Through Two Thousand and Twenty-Eight Capital Improvement Program by Reappropriating and Reallocating Funds Closed Due to the Requirements of Chapter Two Eighteen of the City Code. Bill Twenty-two fifty-five, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Seven Oh Four of Two Thousand and Seven, Effective December Twenty-seventh, Two Thousand and Seven, Entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Eight Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Eight Community Development Block Grant Program and the Approving, and Approving the Two Thousand and Eight Through Two Thousand and Twelve Capital Improvement Program by Adjusting Various Line Items in Conformance with City Council's Two Thousand and Eight Capital Budget Amendments by Removing Unencumbered Funds from Projects Pending Closure Pursuant to Chapter Two Eighteen of the City Code. Bill Twenty-two fifty-six, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Seven Sixty-eight of Two Thousand and Nine, Effective December Thirty-first, Two Thousand and Nine, Entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Ten Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Ten Community Development Block Grant Program and Approving the Two Thousand and Ten Through Two Thousand and Fourteen Capital Improvement Program by Adjusting Various Line Items in Conformance with City Council's Two Thousand and Ten Capital Budget Amendments by Removing Unencumbered Funds from Projects Pending Closure Pursuant to Chapter Two Eighteen of the City Code. Bill Twenty-two fifty-seven, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Seven Ninety-Six of Two Thousand and Thirteen, Effective December Nineteenth, Two Thousand and Thirteen, Entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Fourteen Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Fourteen Community Development Block Grant Program and Approving the Two Thousand and Fourteen Through Two Thousand and Nineteen Capital Improvement Program by Removing Unencumbered Funds from Projects Pending Closure Pursuant to Chapter Two Eighteen of the City Code. Bill Twenty-two fifty-eight, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight Fifty-eight of Two Thousand and Fourteen, Effective January One, Two Thousand and Fifteen, Entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Fifteen Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Fifteen Community Development Block Grant Program and Approving the Two Thousand and Fifteen Through Two Thousand and Twenty Capital Improvement Program by Removing Unencumbered Funds from Projects Pending Closure Pursuant to Chapter Two Eighteen of the City Code. Bill Twenty-two fifty-nine, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight Sixteen of Two Thousand and Fifteen, Effective December Eighteenth, Two Thousand and Fifteen, Entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Sixteen Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Sixteen Community Development Block Grant Program and Approving the Two Thousand and Sixteen Through Two Thousand and Twenty-One Capital Improvement Program by Removing Unencumbered Funds from Projects Pending Closure Pursuant to Chapter Two Eighteen of the City Code. Bill Twenty-two sixty, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Seven Ninety-Seven of Two Thousand and Seventeen, Effective December Twenty-eighth, Two Thousand and Seventeen, Entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Eighteen Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Eighteen Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Eighteen Through Two Thousand and Twenty-Three Capital Improvement Program by Removing Unencumbered Funds from Projects Pending Closure Pursuant to Chapter Two Eighteen of the City Code. Bill Twenty-two sixty-one, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight Sixty-Three of Two Thousand and Eighteen, Effective January One, Two Thousand and Nineteenth, Entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Nineteen Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Nineteen Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Nineteen Through Two Thousand and Twenty-Four Capital Improvement Program by Removing Unencumbered Funds from Projects Pending Closure Pursuant to Chapter Two Eighteen of the City Code. Bill Twenty-two sixty-two, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight Forty of Two Thousand and Nineteen, Effective December Twenty-third, Two Thousand and Nineteen, Entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Twenty Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty Through Two Thousand and Twenty-Five Capital Improvement Program by Removing Unencumbered Funds from Projects Pending Closure Pursuant to Chapter Two Eighteen of the City Code. Bill Twenty-two sixty-three, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight Eighty-Six of Two Thousand and Twenty-One, Effective December Twenty-seventh, Two Thousand and Twenty-One, Entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty-Two Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Twenty Two Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty Two Through Two Thousand and Twenty-Seven Capital Improvement Program by Removing Unencumbered Funds from Projects Pending Closure Pursuant to Chapter Two Eighteen of the City Code. Bill Twenty-two sixty-four, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Seven Ninety-Seven of Two Thousand and Seventeen, Effective December Twenty-eighth, Two Thousand and Seventeen, Entitled- entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Eighteen Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Eighteen Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Eighteen Through Two Thousand and Twenty-Three Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Public Safety Facilities by eighteen thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars and Increasing Park Reconstruction by eighteen thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars." And bill number twenty-two sixty-five, resolution further amending resolution number eight eighty-six of two thousand and twenty-one, effective December twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty-Two Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Twenty-Two Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty-Two Through Two Thousand and Twenty-Seven Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Facility Improvements by four hundred thirty-six thousand dollars, Reducing Litter Can Upgrades and Monitoring by eight hundred twenty-eight dollars, Increasing Facility Improvements Recreation in Senior Centers by three hundred thirty-six thousand eight hundred twenty-eight dollars, and Increasing Park Reconstruction by one hundred thousand dollars."
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do you need a break to take a sip of water?
No, I'm gonna sit down now.
Okay. I know your back is hurting. Um, and Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilperson Strasburger presents bill number twenty-two sixty-six, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Pittsburgh Regional Transit in an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand six hundred eighteen dollars and twenty-five cent for transportation services for the two thousand and twenty-three Richard S. Caliguri Great Race on September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. And bill number twenty-two sixty-seven, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement or agreement with Pittsburgh Three Rivers Marathon, Inc., to provide management services for the Richard S. Caliguri City of Pittsburgh Great Race for a term of three years, two thousand and twenty-four through two thousand and twenty-six, with the option to renew for two one-year terms, two thousand and twenty-seven and two thousand and twenty-eight, at a total cost not to exceed the greater of sixty thousand dollars or forty percent of net revenues generated by each year's great race.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Warwick presents bill number twenty-two sixty-nine, resolution amending resolution eight forty-nine of two thousand and twenty-one, authorizing the mayor and the director of Innovation and Performance to enter on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh into a professional service agreement with Victor Stanley Services. The general objective is to utilize Victor Stanley relay technology to monitor fill levels of litter cans around the city and provide routing services for Department of Public Works via a mobile application to save resources dedicated to litter collection at a cost not to exceed two hundred and twelve thousand one hundred sixty-six dollars to extend the term by one year for a total term of three years. Bill twenty-two seventy, resolution authorizing the mayor and the directors of the Department of Innovation and Performance, Parks and Recreation, and Public Works on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with Rec Desk LLC to provide permitting and scheduling enterprise software at a cost not to exceed twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars over one year. Bill twenty-two seventy-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement and or agreements and amendments thereto with E Plus Technologies, Inc., for assistance in planning and executing a move from existing locations to a data center at a new location at a cost not to exceed fifty thousand dollars over one year. Bill twenty-two eighty-four, resolution amending resolution seven fifty-eight of two thousand and twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Departments of Innovation and Performance, Public Safety, and Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with E Docs Technologies LLC for licensing services and maintenance and support services to provide document management services to include Department of Mobility and Infrastructure documents by increasing the approved amount by forty-two thousand one hundred ninety dollars for an amended total cost not to exceed one million six hundred four thousand ninety-six dollars and eighty-three cent over a period not to exceed eleven years. Bill twenty-two sixty-eight, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article I Administration, Chapter Two Eighteen Capital Budget and Improvement Plan by revising section two eighteen point zero five, project authorization to require notification to city council when the city is applying for grants for projects and activities that are not pre-approved in the capital budget or for grants valued over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And bill twenty-two seventy-one, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article I Administration, Chapter Two Nineteen Operating Budget by revising section two nineteen point oh three Collaborative Budgeting Process to require notification to city council when the city is applying for grants or projects or activities that are not pre-approved in the operating budget or for grants valued over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Um, I'd like to motion to waive rule eight on twenty-two seventy and twenty-two eighty-four.
You have a motion?
Second.
Second with discussion, Councilman?
I have seventy, twenty-two seventy, twenty-two eighty-four, and twenty-two eighty-five.
No, twenty-two eighty-five we're not introducing, yeah.
Okay, so for the two, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The bills will appear on the standing committee's agenda tomorrow. Thank you. And myself, Chair of, I'm sorry, Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents bill number twenty-two seventy-three, resolution that the mayor and the director of city planning on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh are hereby authorized to accept funds from Pittsburgh Regional Transit in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the creation of public art as a part of the Bus Rapid Transit Project. Bill twenty-two seventy-four, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of City Planning to enter into an agreement and or contract with Pittsburgh Community Reinvestment Group for the purpose of utilizing an Americor Vista in the Department of City Planning at a cost not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars over one year. Bill twenty-two seventy-five, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of City Planning to enter into a professional services agreement and or contract with Common Cost Consultants in Sasa Key for the purpose of developing a citywide engagement strategy to support the citywide comprehensive plan process cost not to exceed two million six hundred forty-five thousand dollars over two years. And bill twenty-two seventy-six, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of City Planning to enter into a professional services agreement and or contract with the HR and A Advisors in Urban American City for the purpose of assisting in the development of a citywide comprehensive plan cost not to exceed three million two hundred fifty-five dollars, two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars over two years.
That's the total of six million, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. And myself, Chair of Hearings and Policy, I have one ordinance, one resolution, one reappointment, one appointment, one informing appointment, and two communications. And we'll start with the two communications, please.
Okay.
That seems easy.
Bill twenty-two eighty-two, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh City Code Title II Fiscal Article I Administrative, Chapter Two Nineteen point oh four, Quarterly Reports in order to establish the requirement of quarterly reporting of special revenue funds. Bill number twenty-two eighty-three, resolution authorizing and directing the city controller to close unused or obsolete trust funds. Bill number twenty-two eighty, communication from city controller Michael Lamb submitting a performance audit of the city of Pittsburgh's Department of Public Safety Bureau of Fire dated November two thousand and twenty-three. And bill number twenty-two eighty-one, communication from Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting acting pay request on behalf of the Department of Public Works for Jacqueline Balzer, John Minert, and Mike Schmidt, the Department of Finance for Brian Shannon, and the Commission for Human Relations for Rita Porterfield per the acting pay policy revised in June two thousand and eighteen.
Motion to read, receive, and file all bills, please.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, approved. And then we have one reappointment, Madam Clerk, rate.
Bill twenty-two seventy-seven, resolution reappointing Lisa Choffey as a member of the Shade Tree Commission with a term to expire November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll just say that Lisa does an amazing job for the city of Pittsburgh with very few resources.
There's no one like her.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Lisa's approved, thank you. And one appointment, Madam Clerk?
Bill twenty-two seventy-eight, resolution appointing James Reed as a member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board with a term to expire December first, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. And any second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's approved. And then the one informing appointment, please.
Bill twenty-two seventy-nine, resolution reappointing Lindsey Powell as a member of the Urban Redevelopment Authority of the Pittsburgh Board of Directors with a term to expire December second, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Can I have a motion to read, receive, and file?
It's informing.
It is informing.
It's informing.
So moved, Madam President.
Thank you. And second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'm just gonna say that I'm sure she does a great job in there, she's been on there before, but going forward, when council changes and our leadership changes and some people may change, there may be an opening here or may need to be reviewed whether or not we need an opening here. And so I hope then that we'll have a better conversation about someone from council serving on it. So, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna stay home in my pajamas.
Read, receive, and file, good. And then next order of business? Um, the next order of business is reports to committee for final action. And we'll start with Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law, Councilwoman Strasburger for Councilman Lavelle.
Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Lavelle presents bill number twenty-two thirty-four, reported a committee on finance and law for November twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three with an affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-one seventy-nine, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Dentons, Cohen, and Grigsby, P.C., for expert legal services in connection with the labor and employment matter for an amount not to exceed three thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty-eight cent over one year. Bill twenty-one eighty, resolution providing for the sale of certain property acquired by the city of Pittsburgh at tax sales, items A through S. Twenty-three thirty-five La Place Street, twenty-three thirty-five La Place Street, twenty-three thirty-four Center Avenue, eight oh five Clarissa Street, one forty-five Layflower Street, seventy-one thirty-six Hamilton Avenue, ten South Wheeler Street, eighty-five seventeen Pershing Street, forty-four oh six Chatsworth Street, forty-five sixty-one Gladstone Street, seven oh one Weston Way, seven oh seven through seven oh nine Alcton Street, zero Saginaw Street, thirty-twelve Zephyr Avenue, eighteen fifteen Rialto Street, fourteen seventeen Boyle Street, zero Lorraine Street, and thirteen forty-seven Romanoff Street. Bill twenty-one eighty-one, resolution repealing items and resolutions approved on various dates which authorize the sale of property in various warrants of the city of Pittsburgh due to an incompletion of sale, items A through K. Sixty-nine fifty-one Upland Street, fifty twenty-seven Steel Court, seven twenty-six Ormsby Street, fifty-one Roanoke Street, forty-three Roanoke Street, six twenty-seven Chess Street, one thirty-eight Wabash Street, twelve thirty-four Spring Garden Avenue, thirteen hundred through thirteen oh four Voskamp Street, twenty-seven sixteen California Avenue, and thirty-two oh six Rothplest Street. Bill twenty-one eighty-two, resolution providing for the conveyance by the city of Pittsburgh of certain property having been placed for sale to adjoining property owners in conjunction with the city of Pittsburgh Side Yard Program, items A through double E. Twenty-three fifteen Center Avenue, fifty-one twenty-three Kincaid Street, fifty twenty-three Broad Street, fifty-two twenty Kincaid Street, fifty-three oh five Broad Street, fifty-three oh one Broad Street, fifty-three fifty-one Kincaid Street, nine oh six Laxton Street, zero Finley Street, zero Mount Vernon Street, seventy-two oh five Ray Street, seventy-one fifty-three Attawell Street, seventy-one fifty-five Attawell Street, seventy-two twenty Attawell Street, seventy-seven sixteen Tuscarora Street, forty-eight twenty-six Gidding Street, zero Y Street, three oh five Walter Street, four oh six Eureka Street, four oh five Cedarhurst Street, nine thirty-seven Itten Street, eight thirty-six Lovett Way, fourteen thirty-two Firth Street, nineteen fifty Lay Street, five twenty-three West Jefferson Street, six oh five Chester Avenue, forty twenty Vinston Street, forty twenty-two Vinston Street, zero Red Rose Avenue, and twenty-two forty-eight Lucina Avenue. Bill twenty-one ninety-eight, resolution amending and supplementing resolution twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-three, entitled, "Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements with the vendor chosen throughout the city bid process for the purpose of purchasing and discharging eligible healthcare debt owed by Pittsburghers at a cost not to exceed one million dollars by adding language about the eligible populations and revising the funding sources to be used for the agreement." Bill twenty-two thirty-one, resolution transferring the amount of one hundred thousand dollars within the two thousand and twenty-three operating budget from human resources and civil service to the Office of Management and Budget to partially fund that agreement or agreements for the purchase and discharge of eligible healthcare debt.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are all ready for final action. All in favor, the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk, please call the rule.
President.
Oh.
Sorry.
Oh, I didn't see that. I apologize.
Madam President, sorry.
Yeah.
Gonna give my mic to work there. I have an amendment for bill twenty-one eighty. Make a motion to amend.
We have a motion to amend. Do we have a second? Any discussion? Councilman? No discussion? Let's see what bill one is. Okay, just, please give me a second, so I'm gonna check and see what I'm voting.
Oh, I can just say, um, so the, I'll explain, the amendment is for twenty-one eighty to remove address eighteen fifteen Rialto Street.
Okay.
This address will be better suited to be transferred to the land bank.
Okay.
Go through their process. Thanks.
Okay. So we have a motion to, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now for the regular bills. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Did I do that right?
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Uh, Madam Clerk, I will register no votes on twenty-one ninety-eight and twenty-two thirty-one, and aye on all remaining bills, please.
Mrs. Strasburger? Aye. Mrs. Warwick? Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye, except for on bills twenty-one ninety-eight and twenty-two thirty-one. I don't know other bills.
So... Five ayes on and two noes on bills twenty-one ninety-eight and twenty-two thirty-one, and seven ayes on bills twenty-one seventy-nine, twenty-one eighty, and twenty-one eighty-one, and twenty-one eighty-two.
Thank you. The bills have been received, the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Coghill, Committee on Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents bill number twenty-two thirty-five, reported a committee on public safety and wellness for November twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three with an affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-one seventy-four, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of public safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of eighty-two thousand dollars with a local match of twenty thousand five hundred dollars to expand the city surveillance camera network. Bill twenty-one eighty-three, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Johnson Controls Fire Protection LP in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for rental of a replacement X-ray machine for the lobby of the city county building.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are all ready for final action. All in favor, the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk, please call the rule.
President.
Oh.
Sorry.
Oh, I didn't see that. I apologize.
Madam President, sorry.
Yeah.
Gonna give my mic to work there. I have an amendment for bill twenty-one eighty. Make a motion to amend.
We have a motion to amend. Do we have a second? Any discussion? Councilman? No discussion? Let's see what bill one is. Okay, just, please give me a second, so I'm gonna check and see what I'm voting.
Oh, I can just say, um, so the, I'll explain, the amendment is for twenty-one eighty to remove address eighteen fifteen Rialto Street.
Okay.
This address will be better suited to be transferred to the land bank.
Okay.
Go through their process. Thanks.
Okay. So we have a motion to, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now for the regular bills. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Coghill.
Those opposed will vote no. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us to Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Committee on Human Resources. And Councilman Coghill for Councilman Burgess.
Councilman Burgess presents Bill Number 2236, reported a committee on human resources for November 29, 2023 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2190, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IV Article I Chapter 424 City Employee Parking, Section 424.03 Parking Regulations to transfer responsibility for parking regulations to the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service and enable the establishment of a uniform employee parking policy at no cost to the city. And Bill 2191, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title V Article VII Chapter 542 On-Street Employee Parking, Section 542.02 Definitions and 542.03 Parking Regulations to add definitions and to transfer responsibility for parking regulations to the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service at no cost to the city.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? I just want to thank our clerk's office and our Sergeant at Arms, John, for enforcing the parking for so long for us in the city. Reverend Burgess had put some legislation in a while ago that turned it all, over all the parking enforcement over to John and our clerk's office, and they had so much going on, and this is a way to make sure that, and I want to make sure the public, or the employees understand, no one's losing a parking spot, they're just enforcing what we've already been enforcing for years, or for a year now, and that just takes some of the responsibility off of John and the clerk's office. And if there's any issues or any trouble, then we'll revisit it. But I just want to thank the administration for putting this together, and for John and the clerk's office, and Ira and the clerk's, and our Sergeant at Arms, Ira as well, for enforcing it for so long. It's not easy enforcing these parking spots, towing people and doing stuff, it's not easy. So with that said, any further discussion? Not seeing none. All in favor, the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye. Aye, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And this is to Councilwoman Erica Strausberger, Committee on Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilperson Strausberger presents Bill Number 2237, reported a committee on Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services for November 29, 2023 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2188, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title IV Public Places and Property, Article 11 Parks and Playgrounds by adding a new chapter, 481 Use Regulations, providing guidance for development in parks and greenways.
I think you've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are all ready for final action. All in favor, the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Barb Warwick, Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Thank you, Madam.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 2238, reported a committee on innovation, performance, and asset management and technology for November 29, 2023 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2186, resolution amending Resolution 415 of 2023 authorizing the mayor and the directors of the Department of Public Works and the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement with Indoor View to improve the management of the City of Pittsburgh's facility spaces for the total cost not to exceed $12,600 in order to change the name of the vendor. Bill 2187, resolution amending Resolution 643 of 2020 authorizing the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a contract or contracts with Catalyst Public Works and Citizen Engagement LLC and/or its division, Q-Syn Technologies, Inc., for the purchase of constituent relationship management software services necessary for the operation of the city's 311 response line by increasing the approved amount by $59,650.97 for an amended total cost not to exceed $554,782.87 over nine years.
I think you've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are all ready for final action. All in favor, the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to our last committee of the day with Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs, Councilwoman.
Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 2239, reported a committee on intergovernmental and educational affairs for November 29, 2023 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2176, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for 200 Sandusky Street at no cost to the city. And Bill Number 2177, resolution authorizing the approval of the 2024 Housing Opportunity Fund Annual Allocation Plan for all council districts.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill, Councilman?
Yep. Madam President, thank you. On 2177, just to kind of bring my comments forward from when we had the discussion last Wednesday at the table, this is to approve the allocation plan for the 2024 Housing Opportunity Fund, even though we have not settled on a dollar amount, our budget director's shaking his head, even though that budget amount has not been determined at this point in time, and that adjustments are likely to be made should we not, you know, achieve the suggested allocation that we're in. But I'm happy to approve the plan, I'm not going to stand in the way of that in any way, and vote aye on this, but just wanted to refresh the conversation that we had last week.
Thank you. Anything else from members?
I'm just going to add that I think that we need to really evaluate what we're doing in terms of housing, because there's so many different initiatives and so many programs working in silos and not really necessarily doing the best we can for our dollars, I think, and for the taxpayers. And with the two glaring issues in our budget this year, I think that there are certain things that we need to look at and decide whether this is the best way to do this, or whether it's through the URA or some other avenues. So I just think that it's conversations we have to have. No one wants to have them because they're difficult to have. You know, when I say stuff about taking funding or stop, you know, for us not to do grants, I mean, I really feel like I want to see us have grant funding, but I want to see us do what we're supposed to be doing here. And we don't necessarily have the funds to do both. And so I think that those are some conversations we have to have, and it would really be great to have those conversations with the foundation community and the private sector to make sure that we're getting some funding here, that we can do those things that we want to do, the things that are important to the community, because those things are all important that we do and that the public does for us, but there are things we're elected to do here. And those are things I'm concerned about with the budget. With that said, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to motions and resolutions. I have a few meeting announcements. Please be advised, today at noon, an executive session will be held as it pertains to Bill 2184 First Vehicle Services. Also today, at 1:30 p.m., council will hold our budget hearings with the Department of Human Resources, Pittsburgh Partnership, Office of Municipal Investigation, all chaired by Councilman Burgess, and the Citizens Police Review Board chaired by Councilman Coghill. Tomorrow, Wednesday, December 6, council's standing committee's meeting is scheduled for 10 a.m. here in chambers. To register to speak for this meeting, please fill out the sign-up form on the council's meeting webpage, or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Speaker registration will close at 9 a.m. tomorrow. And on Wednesday at 1:30, council will hold our budget hearings with the Commission on Human Relations chaired by Councilman Burgess, Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh chaired by myself, and Oakland Business Improvement District and Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership chaired by Councilman Lavelle. All budget meetings are livestreamed via the City Channel, Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Is there anything from members? Councilwoman.
I just wanted to quickly comment on Dr. Miller's comments at the beginning. I mean, just for the public, obviously, we try and be lenient with the public comment and let people come and say what they want to say, but just want to underscore that, at least for me personally, generally, I don't even listen, he's a bit of a clown, but today was particularly crude and racist, and I apologize to our colleagues and anyone else who had to sit through that. I noticed that he scurried out quickly afterwards. How convenient. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anything else from members? I would just add that we do try to remain as open as we can with public comment, but there are guidelines, and according to our guidelines and according to codes and to everything else we've worked with through our solicitor and with our law department, there is a limit. This is not just a forum for anybody just to come and say and do whatever they want. That's for other places, but for this place, there are guidelines. And so just so the public knows, there are guidelines, and we work with those through the law department and with the ACLU and others who've helped us over the past years. So with that said, is there anything else from members?
No.
No? Okay. Have a motion to excuse the members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meetings.
They're moved.
Second.
Meetings adjourned, thank you.